All right, so we're going to go ahead and proceed with our meeting for the day. We have elongated day today. We're going to start off with a work session where we'll continue our discussion around educational planning and some of the recommendations that have come forward and data and information that's been shared. Following that, we'll proceed to our regular business meeting agenda, which will start with a closed session to deal with, you know, personnel and student legal matters that we normally would do. Following that, we'll then have our business meeting that will start at 7:00 PM. Just a reminder, as part of the business meeting, we're going to have an initial public hearing on the budget where we allow for members of the public to begin to share with the board and administration priorities they think we should be considering during our budget process. And then we'll just proceed with our regular business meeting from there. Just coming off the holiday, I just wanted to pass on something to the board. I was at the city council's legislative dinner this week, and prior to the dinner, a couple of individuals came up and they just said, gave word of thanks and appreciation to the school board for the work that we do. They acknowledged that, you know, we put a lot of time in and worked a lot of hours. And so, coming off the weekend, I just wanted to pass on those thanks and also pass on likewise to the staff, because I know not only school board members but staff probably the last few days probably took some phone calls during turkey time and football time and just family time. And so, I know for a lot of us, that's just part of the job and the commitment that we have. But nevertheless, it made me feel good to have individuals come up and thank the board for its commitment, and I just wanted to pass that on. With that, is there anything that anyone needs to see changed or altered either for the work session agenda or for the business meeting agenda coming up at 7:00? All right, well, Ms. Basine?
Is there information?
Well, we're going to, no, I think they're going to provide some updates. There's been some email things that we've gone through, but we're just going to let them go through the presentation if there's any questions or additional information that we have. We're just going to have a continuing discussion. So, I guess I'm off. So, anyway, we're just going to have a continuing discussion today, and we'll find out if there's any additional data that we'll get during this presentation or that we will need to have subsequent. But as I mentioned, there's no vote, there's no rushing today. This is just a continuation of our discussion from the November 1st work session. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, members of the board, good afternoon. As Mr. Jordan just indicated, the commitment following the November 1st board meeting is that after the presentation of two recommendations and two preliminary recommendations, that this meeting would allow the board an opportunity to have its discussion about the recommendations, to also give us direction, if you will, because the reason, as we said in that last meeting, the preliminary recommendations were such that, again, they were very early stages and we needed some thought from the board in terms of the ultimate direction for some of that. And so, there is one update that I would like to give the board at this moment. You recall, there were two firm recommendations that we had asked the board to begin to consider. One deals with the pathway change for St. Helena and its middle and high school pathway being Blair and Maury. The second firm recommendation that we asked the board to consider is the boundary changes for Camp Allen and Sewell's Point Elementary in order to accomplish what we had committed to with the Department of Defense support of the construction of Camp Allen School and increasing the percentage of military-connected families. And so, that was the second recommendation. It's that recommendation that I want to say to the board, while we can certainly discuss it, that at this point, we want to hold on the board's action on that recommendation. As we've looked, as we started the preparation for what would happen in the phasing of the construction of Camp Allen, we were getting ready, even though it's not until later. Again, you know, you don't wait until the last minute to start doing that work. And one of the things that became the aha moment for me and some others of the team is that I had lost sight, I will say I lost sight, that January 19, yeah, January of 2019 would represent the ending of Phase 1. I was carrying in my mind that January of 2019 represented the completion of the full Camp Allen project. And so, when the members of the team were working on space utilization and everything for Phase 1 of the building that would be in place, we recognized that we have an enrollment increase above projected enrollment that we had not anticipated. And so, as we started, as the team started mapping out which classrooms we use for which grade levels during the transition for Phase 2 final construction, we ran into some acknowledgements that we were going to be space constrained based on the classrooms and the building areas of the building would be completed and available to the full school use as a pre-K5 school. We're approximately 46 students above projected enrollment at Camp Allen now. So, we've added students since all through the school year to this point, to a point now where the net of 46 students above capacity for that school. So, we will be doing some work looking at what it will take for us to have space available for six to seven additional classrooms in order to accommodate K through 5. We will be looking at some options related to potential relocation of pre-K for the 18, 19, 19, 20 school years with the goal of bringing them back, you know, once the entire building is finished. And not all of the students live in that Camp Allen attendance zone, as you're aware, with our preschool, often we fill those spaces where they're available with students who have completed the process. So, because the school does not, will not open until the fall of 2020, 2020, say it that way, we just had a little debate over how do you say 2020 and 2021 and could mean different things. Those two years are going to be interesting. And so, we want to delay action on the permanent boundary changes for Camp Allen and Sewell's Point so that we can do some more work as it relates to available space during the phasing and what it will look like when the school is fully completed. We don't anticipate major shifts from what was presented to the board on November 1st, but we felt it wise at this point not to confuse parents and others. We remember on November 1st, we talked a little bit about perhaps phasing in grade levels. We would put a halt to all of that because what we're going to have to focus on is accommodating students that are currently enrolled and will enroll at Camp Allen next school year and getting us to the point of the entire project being completed. So, wanted to bring that update to the board. And I also want to thank members of the senior team, the executive directors, Tracy and Lee, as, and that as we went through this process of getting ready to assign space in anticipation of about a year out, we recognized that there were going to be some challenges. So, because we do have time, we're not in a crisis at this point. We are not pulling back the recommendation. We're just asking that it go on hold until we can address current and future projected enrollment. One of the things that's going to also begin to potentially impact enrollment will be the availability of military housing for individuals with Section 8 vouchers. So, we have to also determine what will be the capacity of families that could move in to underutilized military housing during this period. So, there are a number of factors that we need to go back and review, but because the final opening of the school is not January of 2019, but rather the summer of 2020, we are asking that we hold that recommendation so we can do some more data collection and work and around both accommodating Phase 1 with the existing school and then what the final piece will look like once the project is completed.
Let's just pause there for a moment. Any questions about that process? Ms. Doyle?
So, should the numbers bear out? The recommendation would likely be implemented, but at a later date, once the school is open and full and you can see the full enrollment and where children are coming from.
That's correct. And we would, that would, the final implementation of that would be the fall of 2020.
Right, okay.
Anyone else? So, is there anything in that why follow the timeline and the enrollment that you're looking at now, at least the numbers that came in over what was projected? In terms of a general concept of the idea that we would be looking at possibly changing the attendance zones to align with the construction of the new school, is there anything that would prohibit us from taking action on that concept, even as we know the phasing in and implementation of it would be determined moving forward?
No, there's absolutely nothing. And we actually planned to bring it back to the board, perhaps for action in the spring. And then, a year, so that would be roughly two years out, anyone, everyone would know where they would be attending. But we felt it important to do some more data collection, given these enrollment shifts that we hadn't planned for, and the availability of military housing for non-military families. Because, again, the commitment was to increase the percentage of military-connected children in the school. So, we have to go back to the table now that, because in our original design of this, the Section 8 vouchers and being able to access military housing was not anything that we had considered. That's been a new occurrence. That's something new that we've just dealt with in the last month. And so, because of that, we said, well, we got to figure out, you know, how many units are there? What could the potential be for enrollment there? So, there's that entire piece of what we have to address. But we anticipate coming back recommending to the board a final concept for that, once we have visibility around all this going on, do the associated public hearings with the schools, and then move to board action on that. But we just are asking today that you hold until we assess the impact of this new information.
Anything else on the Camp Allen Sewell's Point? All right. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. So, with that, Tracy, there are maybe a couple of things you want to update. We want to give most of this time to the board for discussion and questions, not just with us but amongst yourselves. And so, Tracy may have a couple of things that he wants to update, but the rest of the time, we'll turn back to the chair to facilitate.
So, for me, it's just a matter, because I anticipated a dialogue and, you know, the pressure of the last meeting that we had of time, and we tried to digest a lot of information in a short amount of time. And so, I certainly appreciate this additional time with the board to try to clarify, try to see where we stand, where we shouldn't go forward on some of this, where we should, or what needs further discussion or data for you guys. You know, certainly, the St. Helena move warrants some discussion about, you know, what the impacts of that will be. Lee is here with live GIS for you. That's purposeful, so we're able to pull up data immediately so you can see it. Although, we've done analysis to see that, you know, the last time we did the analysis, we didn't really have the socioeconomic impact, but what we've realized on the socioeconomic side, it's a 1% difference. So, that moves in the right direction toward balance, but 1% may or may not be enough. But it is a move in the right direction, so we know that. But there's other questions I know you may have, so we want to address some of those today. There will still be some discussion around certainly the Lake Taylor Middle School and the possible transfer over to a K8 facility. There's some clarification there I was made aware of, maybe some miscommunication over there, hearing that people may think that Fairlawn's going to get K2 students back. That's not, never been talked about in my context, but I've been made aware that that's kind of a rumor out there. Let's kind of quell that. It's never been part of the planning discussion to move back to a K5 before we did anything else. That has to be a bigger discussion. I mean, the long, what we're feeling, I think, in the whole Lake Taylor quadrant is this, you know, when you do this for as long as I've done this and the longer we've done this together, and I shared this with Dr. Boone yesterday, is that you get this instinct or this gut feeling that says, you know what? This Lake Taylor impact across the board, K-12 in this quadrant, really warrants a deeper dive because there's so much impact that comes from this part of the city. And how we shape this can shape the future of what this division can look like as a whole too. And so, part of that is this idea that even St. Helena impacts that. I mean, taking those kids out of that feeder to go over to another feeder pattern impacts that. But even thinking about different grade configuration or future site use of what that site's going to be used for in the future, you know, the access to career and technical, what does that mean to middle grades education or to the K8 education? And you get this feeling that you need to step back a second and you say, look, okay, so we've talked about not only St. Helena, but we've talked about this Fairlawn Popular Halls, and now we're talking about CTE on this campus and what that does to impacts of high school boundaries. There's a domino that you can't separate yourself from. And so, it warrants more than just, I mean, I've got, you know, I've got some really fascinating numbers on high school socioeconomic balance right now that come from this year's data that I think would surprise us all. That I think that, you know, looking at, you know, across the board, if, and we know what, you know, as far as our measure goes of, and I think I want to just bring this up right away because I think it's going to be part of our discussion, is that as we look at, you know, high school balance of socioeconomic, you know, basically the reported number is 64% of the high school level of free and reduced lunch. That's the district average. So, there's no way to get schools across the board at 50% across the board because your numbers don't warrant that. But as I look at the numbers, three of your five high schools fall within a 5% of that, of the live-in population. So, Norview, Granby, and Lake Taylor all fall within a 5% of your district-wide average. That's pretty good, of live-in. Now, Booker T. Washington and Maury start to separate themselves, which is a fascinating phenomenon because of how the dynamic of the core of the city work and housing and all that, and how that works together. But this is what I discovered, is that when we start to give students the choice to move, Lake Taylor goes out of whack. It goes to, it goes to 11 percentage points above the kids who live in it. So, it takes it completely out of the realm of an acceptable range of balance. And so, what we have to concern ourselves with is, as much as we embrace choice, and we should embrace choice, is that what's the choice doing to us? And so, what I find is that, as I look at the elementary school level then, I find this fascinating, is that based on live-in numbers, and if I do a 10% variance of the district-wide average of 63%, only eight schools fall outside a 10% parameter of that, eight of your 29 elementary schools. So, our live-in and the way our boundaries are drawn right now are getting, are closer than we may think they are. Do we have issues? Yeah, we've got one school at 28%. We've got another school at 85%. So, we still have those real outliers. But I think that within the parameters of trying to do one of the major goal of the objectives of this board that we've tried to be doing for five years is that we're trying to get to a point where we're seeing some of this balance happen. But we need to be intentional about when we make choice decisions or when we make neighborhood boundary changes or when we do these kind of things, that we get closer to the goal. And so, when I started to look at the numbers, especially at the high school level, I found it fascinating that if I took one boundary, one elementary boundary out of Booker T. and I put it in Maury, and I took one of Maury's and put it into Booker T., the high school live-in would be balanced, but you'd be busing kids across the district. So, that's not a facility's choice. That is really an operational choice of how we want to do things. Now, it doesn't say we're meeting our goals, but what it's telling me is that what we're, because we've been intentional about it, we need to continue to be intentional about it. And even the moves that we're making are intentional. Now, the St. Helena isn't a big move, but it's a percentage point in the direction of socioeconomic balance. So, it's not a big one, but it does help some. And it gets to an idea that the way the way transportation works, the way feeder patterns and programmatic things can work, we can make this work. Now, what I've also realized in the last couple of weeks in Camp Allen, and Lake Taylor's really put this in perspective, is that this needs a comprehensive look. Now that we have condition, now that we have six years of really good demographic data, now that we have the program direction, and I know we've got work to do there, I mean, I understand, I understand that some of the programmatic frustrations that the community feels in some of the high schools, because we've heard it and we know that. But once we start the right direction, we've got all of these things in line now to look at this division as a whole and say, you know what? We're going to do this as a holistic view. Because when I make a move at St. Helena, and then we do a Lake Taylor, and then we do a high school CTE, the domino impact on Norview High School and Granby High School and Booker T. Washington all come into play. And if we don't look at it as a whole and really get the comprehensive look, I'm sitting there going, maybe we need to pause in some way, shape, or form on some of these things that says, you know, these incremental changes we make, and I think planning's always going to have a little bit of reactionary measure to it because it has to, when we make program decisions like a CTE that gets implemented, we have to do some facility decision-making on a quicker timeline because that's relevant to what we do. But when we're looking at a five, 10, or 15-year vision, understanding that we have some things out there that we don't really have control over, although we can help shape some of it, is that, is that this needs a whole look. And so, if we need to look at balancing middle school seats because we have this excess number of middle school seats, it's not a middle school discussion. It is a K-12 discussion around it. And so, we continue to work back and forth. I think that, I know there's been questions about the steering committee, and so to set the record straight there, we have a meeting tomorrow night. And what we're going to do is, I think that, and to nobody's, and this is not throwing anybody under the bus, let's not do anything like that, but we were put on a pretty tight timeline with the fall with this group. The difference between this group and the last group we had is the last group that we had, we started from the basics. We started from enrollment. We started from what condition data we had. We started from program, and we learned all of that first, before we started any sort of options or scenarios development. This group didn't have that opportunity because we were really forced into, and not forced into, but we were really in a position that we had to make some decisions pretty quickly. Tomorrow night, we're going to reset with this group. And we're going to sit there and we're going to talk about capacity, and we're going to talk about enrollment, we're going to talk about condition, we're going to talk about these program things, and we're going to reset it. And we're going to say, okay, now that we're reset, Merry Christmas, we're going to come back in the winter, and we're going to really tackle this thing as a comprehensive community group that comes from data. And I think that's the right thing to do with this group. I don't think the time we have is wasted. I think that they, they're grounded in the complexity of what this is about. They really are. But I think the frustration that I think the group has felt is that there's data that really wasn't relevant to some decision-making. So, for instance, the condition of a building may not have mattered in a boundary scenario for the high schools. But without understanding condition and what it really means, how is a group to know that it's not relevant to a boundary discussion, is the conclusion I've come to. And so, what we want to do, in Dr. Boone's light with Camp Allen, is to set back on this very same thing with the comprehensive plan. Now that we have all the pieces of data, and I think you've read the condition report, maybe, and maybe fell asleep to it a little bit, because there's just a lot of numbers and stuff in there. But what we have now is a real foundation for the four-legged stool of planning. And I think that, so with that, we really, we certainly want to take discussions around, the discussion we had around Lake Taylor's, both K8 and high school discussion. We can start with the St. Helena discussion if you want to, because I think that's, we can talk through that with capacity and socioeconomic, and we've got some of that. And then Lee can pull up the data live for you so you can see any adjustments that can be made there, or any other questions that you might have in the dialogue. So, I appreciate you letting me open with the opportunity to talk about those things. Thank you.
I would recommend that we at least begin with the St. Helena discussion since as of right now, depending upon the board action, we are considering having a public hearing on it next week. And is that right? Next week?
Yes.
So, I think that if there's going to be the will of the board to either move forward with that or to deviate from that, it would seem to me that we can at least start there. But I know that there are lots of questions that we have from things that you just touched on.
Sure.
But maybe if you can help walk us through that scenario, it would be a good starting point.
Absolutely. So, the recommendation that came through was the idea that we start to phase the current fifth grade class into, so a year-by-year increment of taking the St. Helena feeder into the Blair. And so, you can see on the board here, you have it behind you? Okay. So, on here, what, the first thing we look at always is we look at the capacity. Now, Blair's always been a discussion about capacity, certainly, and let's clear that up. You know, when we did the first walkthrough of Blair, we counted enough classroom space in that building to accommodate, at a reasonable class size, 1,700 students. But if you recall, and this has been, you know, several iterations of us meeting, we made a site visit and walked with the principal for several hours in this building. And you come to realize that when the building was renovated, that not a lot of the old building was taken out. And so, the capacity of both buildings kind of put together equal to 1,700. But what you quickly come to realize is between the infrastructure of the site, parking, circulation, vehicle, all that, student pedestrian, and the cafeteria size and the circulation size, is that building doesn't nearly hold 1,700, and it won't. However, we still believe that 1,300 is a reasonable number in the building because we feel like the cafeteria is appropriate for it. We figure you can spread students enough across the building as the circulation doesn't become and warrant an issue there. So, at 1,300 capacity, I understand there's plenty more room in that building, but there's really nothing you can do about that, honestly, the way the building's configured today, that in today's, in today's world, and we just have the current numbers on here. And Lee, you have, and I'll let Lee explain what numbers he has up there for you.
Sure. So, what we did was, we took a look at the students living within the St. Helena boundary from grades 6 through 12. But the first table I have displayed up here are grades 6 through 8 living within all the middle school boundaries. You'll see the first column is the name of the school, second is an N, which is no for the socioeconomic data we have. So, no basically means not on free and reduced lunch. Yes means they are on free and reduced lunch. You'll see a total column, column D, that is all the 6th through 8th graders living within the attendance boundary. And then, column E, the disadvantaged percentage, is the percentage of kids living within the boundary that are on free and reduced lunch. Okay? So, the proposed scenario is to take St. Helena and feed them to Blair versus into Lake Taylor Middle School. So, what I've done is highlighted those two schools here. Currently, the way it sits with this year's student data, Blair is at 1,187 kids living within the boundary. Lake Taylor has 910 kids living within the boundary, and their free and reduced lunch percentages are 65% and 75% respectively. So, what I also did was then take a look at the St. Helena boundary and look at the 6th through 8th graders living within that attendance area. So, we have 105 kids living within that attendance area. Of those, 81% are on free and reduced lunch. So, if we send these 6th through 8th graders to Blair, the two lines at the bottom are the results of that change or of that shift. So, let me see if I can make it a little more tangible here. So, what that does is bring Blair to 1,292 students that live within the attendance boundary, the current Blair boundary plus the St. Helena area, and then takes Lake Taylor down to 805 students. Their socioeconomic percentages would be 66% and 74% respectively. Okay?
And so, you know, just, this year's attendance is 1,088. So, there's a, so there's a more kids that move out than come back in.
At Blair.
At, yes, ma'am, at Blair. And then, the next three classes at St. Helena are 51, 40, and 37. So, if there is a 100% cohort survival there, and there won't be because, like, you know, for this, for instance, this year's St. Helena class has six that attend other schools. I think that's, that's close. You have six students that attend another high or middle school option. But that, that's an equal of about 120, let's say 125 kids that are addition to the 1,088. Okay? So, that gets them to a capacity number that's closer to 1,300. So that gets them to a capacity number that's closer to 1,300, and puts them right at that capacity of 1,300. So that is, and again, that's with 125 in the, and what happens is that the average across the board from St. Helena is about 40 that come in. I see 41, 41, 37, 40. So it's about 40. We have a big class this year, and that class comes off. So we're probably talking anywhere of an impact from 120 to 125 kids in a three-grade span in the next several years, is what I would anticipate the range to be of that building.
So I also did the same analysis at the high school level, using the St. Helena area and high school students living within that boundary. Currently, we've got 1,327 at Lake Taylor High School, and 1,584 students in the Maury High School boundary, with 69 percent and 48 percent respectively. Within St. Helena, there are 132 high school students as of this year. Their free and reduced lunch percentage is also at 81 percent. And what that does is bring Lake Taylor High School down by 1 percent, and Maury up by 3 percent for their free and reduced lunch. So it would be 68 percent and 51 percent respectively.
Yes.
Is the 132, that's the live-in population for St. Helena that would theoretically go to Lake Taylor High School if they did not choose other options?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
And in this number in particular, again, this is our domino, the decision on a high school boundary solution for a comprehensive CTE program directly impacts this, as far as utilization of facilities. And so we already anticipate that by, if it's a no-boundary solution for the high school, that all of these numbers change, because every single one of the high schools goes above 100 percent. And so, so we know that happens, and that'll happen anyway. So this is in the current state that they're in. Now, and I'll give you the current enrollment, in case you don't have it in front of you also. The current enrollment is, at Lake Taylor is 1225. And currently at Maury, it's 1,659.
What was Maury again?
Maury was, I'm sorry, it's 1,659.
I'm going to let Mr. Richter handle all the questions, so go ahead. Dr. Robinson was.
My question is, when you discussed the citywide comprehensive CTE school, would push all of the other four high schools above 100 percent?
It would.
Theoretically.
Theoretically, on paper, it does.
On paper, because we would be pulling students out of the buildings, back into Lake Taylor for the, or the comprehensive technical education.
That is correct.
One of the options does that.
Yeah.
Because we also presented to the board another option that, that has a smaller boundary, I was going to say for Lake Taylor High School, still associated with it.
Correct.
But it's a theoretical overutilization though.
Right. But in reality, though, it will be pulling students out to go to the CTE school, which will then lower them back into more normal ranges.
Right. And in either scenario here with the high school, even if we decided that there's a small boundary that attends, St. Helena option is to go to the Maury, regardless of if it's a smaller boundary or no boundary at all. So that doesn't change in that. So, and then I'll.
You know, the other thing we need to factor is, is the Maury of the future, and what the capacity of that's going to be.
Precisely.
Right. And so that's another discussion point that we need to have here, that needs to be very open and transparent, because it's not the Maury of today, in terms of capacity potentially, it could be greater. Or it could be less, if we program it for some reason differently, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but we also have to factor in that construction, reconstruction, renovation, whatever is done, impacts Maury's capacity and utilization.
Exactly.
That, that's precisely right. So I'm not sure where I have to stand on that one, because I'm kind of in between.
You're looking around.
Sorry about that. I'm going to jump here and then, no, is that right? Yeah.
So as you were talking earlier about if, looking at the high school boundaries, and I believe I heard you correctly, that if you were to move Booker T.'s boundary and Maury's boundary slightly, we could get more of a balance.
Of a live-in balance.
Of a live-in balance, right.
That is correct.
So then how does that, what would those numbers look like if St. Helena was also feeding toward, into that?
So in this case, I don't, it would likely, because of the free and reduced lunch count, probably exacerbate a little higher percentage into Booker T., because of the already propensity of low socioeconomic feeder schools that go into it. But in an effort to do a kind of a redistricting, we could explore the opportunity then of a better balance of live-in for that.
Yeah.
And St. Helena really, because of the small percentage it has on Maury, doesn't make a big impact on Maury.
Yeah. And I, so I guess I ask that to lead into the bigger question, is that, that's our goal, right, is to create that. So shouldn't that occur first, before we start making these feeder pattern decisions? I mean, I guess that's, that's where I'm having a hard time with. I, you know, I see the benefit of doing this, but this is a singular, isolated, you know, it's, it's, what's the big picture? What's it look like? And integrating, I guess, a disconnect that I also feel is the facilities' condition report, and the number of schools that are in poor condition, and what will happen with all of those facilities, and how that impacts where students are going to go. So, yeah.
Let me, let me take a stab at some of that. The St. Helena piece, while the end result is a Maury connection, is the Maury enrollment, was really driven by, and reminding the board that some of the data we were faced with is about 2,500-seat capacity, and most of that is at the, at the middle school level. And so when we started looking at, what are options to right-size our middle schools based on the available seats, because we do have about 2,500 seats available. Some of that, over time, has been impacted by the addition of two new K-8 schools, Crossroads and now South Side STEM. The addition of a 3-8 school that has also pulled some students out. We maintain specialty programs of both the international studies at Rosemont and young scholars. And so when we look at the numbers of students that are feeding into middle schools of those places, that begins to, to drop in the comprehensive middle schools, the number of students attending. So live-in is one thing, attending will be a secondary piece, because we have so many options for students in grade six through eight, and that families are taking advantage of. So the initial work with St. Helena was helping us deal with the middle school issue of so much excess capacity, and how do we bring that into line? One of the comments we made to the board last time, on the first, was that with 2,500 seats, we could almost close two full middle schools. But we are also using this as a programmatic piece. And so how do we serve students? How do we begin to address some of the desires for continued and increased choice options that the board has presented and others have asked for? And so the St. Helena's piece was driven initially around, how do we address where they deal, go middle school-wise? And then, as Tracy said in his opening comments, that whole Lake Taylor corridor piece, how do we address that?
And so, so continue that discussion. You know, I, I understand the discussion point being around capacity, but I'm thinking, you know, what if we had the discussion around achievement? And we know what strategies work for achievement? Can we talk about this, what we're doing here around achievement? What do we need to do to close the achievement gap? And we know, time and time again, what the research shows, and we're, and let's talk about capacity within that framework versus capacity, and then we'll deal with achievement.
Well, I.
I mean, I'm not saying we're not.
I don't think we separated the two. We may not have been as explicit, because even in the discussion that we just had with Lee and Tracy sharing the numbers, one of the greatest impacts, as the board has said over and over again, and we certainly agree with and acknowledge, concentrated areas of poverty, we tend to see underperforming schools. And so with the board's overarching goal to reduce concentrated poverty, which then, with that socioeconomic mix, creates environments that have an infrastructure for greater success. And so that's why we looked at it from the socioeconomic status and what it does with achievement. But be clear, you, it takes more than just the facility condition, more than just the fact that the school is currently fully accredited or not, and more than just the socioeconomic mix to make sure that's happening. And that's the other part of the work, go back to all that we presented to the board this summer. That's what we're doing around the student achievement piece and all the things we brought in to, to this point through the school year.
So, Dr. Boone?
I'll let Court them go first, since I had asked a question originally.
Okay, yes.
So is there any future development around the St. Helena school that we've heard from the city, or planning in any way?
Other than the current construction projects, it seemed to be, there's a couple of apartments that seems to be reducing housing capacity there. I haven't, I'm not aware of any other ones right now that are occurring. We can certainly find that out, though.
But we haven't.
Especially there, because it's dynamic, so.
We haven't, you know, we, we had a joint meeting with the planning commission, you know, through that process, we're trying to increase the communication so that we can consider that. But to my knowledge right now, while there are renovations that are going on, the, at least as of right now, what's in the hopper, or what's been developed, doesn't, is not designed in such a way that it is intentionally trying to provide a greater economic mix. It is focused on trying to rehab the current housing stock, and with some of the tools that are being used, it continues to use, you know, low-income housing tax credits, for example. So to allow it to have better units, in theory, it may offer some new opportunities for, for working families, but by and large, the, the South Side tends to have a disproportionate share of low-income housing, and what's currently on the map doesn't show that it's going to have any significant impact on that at this time.
There are a couple of things that were closer to Camp Estella.
Right.
That, a couple of apartments, but not anything major in the, in the St. Helena.
And that's what I thought, I just wanted to kind of ask the question and make that clear to folks publicly. And right now, St. Helena, is it roughly a 95 percent utilization?
And fewer than 300 students.
Sorry?
Fewer than 300 students and a 95 percent.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, okay.
I'm very glad to hear you say that it's time to take a step back and look at the bigger picture here, instead of doing it in small bites. I think that was the overall tone that I got when I was reading everyone's feedback from the survey, which I agree with, because the domino effect is very real. Not only is the domino effect real, but the historical perspective, which I know that we have brought up before, some is distant history, some is very recent history, also impacts the decision that we make. And with the public hearing being next week, I would like to get a sense after this conversation is done, as to, are we going to present this option to the students and families that are attending St. Helena, to the students and families who will be receiving them at Blair and at Maury? And I say this because Tanya is absolutely right. The focus, which I believe should be our primary focus, is how does achievement play into all of these decisions that we're making? Honestly, the building condition, and who is going where, we can achieve that through a vote, but the achievement and the resources that we put behind that under Dr. Boone is going to be what makes this plan successful or not successful. And that is what I want to have a very clear and confident understanding about when we make these decisions. When we made the transition when Lakewood closed, Blair received a large percentage of students, and there were other things going on within that building that did not have the best impact on their achievement. And we suffered through teacher turnover, administration turnover. We do not want to make a decision that is going to have an impact on any school, Blair, Azalea, Lake Taylor, Maury, having an impact such as that. So I really want the board to consider everything that we are going to have a vote on, you know, whether it be distant future, whatever that might be. But these decisions are going to be very important that we make. And so with regards to the Lake Taylor K-8, I'm glad that we're going to bring that into discussion as well, because there were some rumors floating around about the mobile units and whatnot. I just don't know how that stuff gets started, but once these conversations are out there, people talk, and our job is to set everything correct, and let them know what the steps are in the timeline, and communicate that to the folks within the buildings. So before this conversation is over, the other thing that I would like to know is, when the community engagement session happens tomorrow, what are the?
Steering committee.
I'm sorry. Sorry, the steering committee meets tomorrow. That's right, let's make sure we get all our facts straight, right? When the steering committee meets tomorrow, are they going to be presented with options, and are they going to be like a sounding board? Or are they, I just, I still just don't understand what the steps are that you guys are going to do going forward? And maybe that's what you all are going to come together with and discuss tomorrow.
The idea, and I shared this with Dr. Boone yesterday and today again, is that I think it's unfair to this particular group, without getting, again, the difference between the two, and there is little crossover of anybody who was on the last steering committee, and we had some really good citizens on that committee too, that are grounded in data. This group hasn't had a chance to be grounded in data. And so to present them with an option tomorrow is not fair to them. And so we believe it's, in essence, and I hate to use this, because reset has been given a negative connotation in this country, but, but we want to give this, this steering committee an opportunity to succeed.
Right.
And in that voice, to say, you can't succeed without having knowledge of what six years of buried in this head have done, and with the staff that I've been able to work with, and now, again, new leadership that's come in, and, and started a direction of change of academic achievement and all that. I mean, we've got a lot of good, I think this, this group can't do that. Tomorrow night, tomorrow night is about, here's the results of the community meeting, just so you know. This is what we discussed at the board yesterday. Now, in the spring, in the winter and the spring, we're going to tackle a comprehensive facilities master plan for the entire division. You will be involved in that process, but you'll be involved in that process from data point one. And tomorrow night, we start that. So here's a condition report. I'll explain the high level of it, I'm not going to go building by building, we'd be there all night. But here's a condition report. Here's the current demographics, here's the projections, here's the programs. Now, this is our baseline of discussion, this is your homework for the next six weeks, to just kind of become grounded in this, start studying it, to know what it is. And then, as we start to develop internally, just like we did last time. So in the, in the last process with that last committee, we did a lot of internal work to get the data ready, to even create some initial scenarios to walk into the group, because they were already grounded in the data, to then get their buy-in on scenarios before we present long-term scenarios. And so it is likely that we're going to look at this division in kind of a quadrant sense, or even maybe a tri-sense, or even maybe a five, I don't know how we're going to do it yet, but it makes sense to kind of look at the division in, in parts like that as you're planning to a whole. They have to know that process. In six weeks, we weren't able to do that with them. So that's our goal tomorrow, is to kind of set the standard and say, this is what we're going to be doing, and we want you with us on it. So with that, does that, does that make sense, what we're going to do now? Is that a little clearer?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yes?
So I just.
Want to jump in next?
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to clarify my comment and kind of bring us back to the decision. So when, when I said putting achievement first, you know, I meant, you know, we have achievement gaps that are, you know, we have racial achievement gaps, we have gaps gaps between, uh, you know, with students with disabilities, we have, so thinking about all of that. But we are also, we, it's known and has been found that Norfolk has one of the highest number of racially isolated schools. So I think our overall goal is that. And we don't know, you know, of course, anytime we change the boundaries or move students from one school to another, there's an impact of some sort.
No doubt.
But I have not seen data that shows that when Lafayette Winona closed, that when those students moved over, that the, that that cohort of kids had impacted the achievement at that school. Because there were a number of factors that could have gone into that. And I don't think that we have actually seen that it was the movement of those children. I think we've talked about it before, but I want to be clear about that, that that's not something that we know as fact. So when we do consider this, that shouldn't be, we should not do this because that may decrease the achievement at a particular school.
I don't know.
Yeah, and I, I know that's not what you meant, but I, I'm just trying to get back to what our initial discussion was, that what's our collective decision here?
Agreed. And so what we have to be sure of, and this is kind of my point on, on choice, is that we should support, we should support choice because there are different students that demand and have different needs and have different interests. But when we're seeing an opposite impact of what our goals might be, we have to rethink, maybe, a little bit. To your guys' point, is that if we make the move, we don't want to negatively impact or increase a gap, because we know there's going to be some retraction of achievement when you make moves, because changing of a building does that. I mean, when we change grade configuration buildings, we know we go back a little bit before we go forward. So we know that. What we need to do is, to your point, I don't, I think our goal is exactly that. So now that we have even the programmatic things that, that the goal is being set. But I think the factors that go in, and to both of, both of your points about achievement and what it does, is that there are unknown factors or factors that are hard to trace back to, that if a student didn't achieve the skills of comprehension in elementary school before they went to middle school, why is that the middle school's fault? Or high school's the same way. And so if we don't have that K-12, and, and part of that, and, and this isn't, you guys don't have a patent on this because large districts deal with this, is tracing back the core of success or failure is difficult when students bounce around or are transient or have that dynamic about the, the demographic. So if we find a way to find better success in both programmatic and demographic feeders, we have a larger percentage of success of tracking where we can make better strides. So I know that if I, if we see that there's a pathway that's not making our goals because we see a direct pathway, but right now with, with, even with still, we have a couple split boundaries and with kids that go to a middle school and then split off to two different high schools or, or elementary kids that split to different middle schools, that is a difficult thing to track, the source of success or failure. And I think to that point, was Lafayette Winona the cause of anything? Maybe. But correlation and causation are two different, vastly different things. And so I think that, sure, it probably did because of just the, the emotional move and that happens. But I think that we have to dig deeper, but the choices we make, to Dr. Gabriel's point, is exactly that. We don't want to harm the achievement or increase the gap. And so this is why the intentional of backing away, just for a second, a brief pause again, we think is a, a good goal for us.
So Ms. Wagner, were you trying to get in?
Well, you know, I, I have to chime in on, on certainly that looking at the achievement gap is, is certainly should be priority. But the other piece that I'm, that concerns me, um, you say you have six or seven solid years of data, of demographic data.
Demographic data, yes, ma'am.
But what happens, just like with, uh, finding out at the, recently, that they're taking military housing is going to be Section 8. So how flexible are we in terms of this piece? Because we don't really know what's going to happen, uh, in terms of the movement.
Yeah, Ms. Wagner, this is something that I, this is the scary piece of planning, is that when you don't have, like, when you don't have control of the federal rules around vouchers. But here's what, here's what we've learned, though, is that the more we know, the more we know to ask. So because of this Camp Allen, our next question that's going to go to the city planning is, okay, what are the potential areas for receiving of movement of vouchers or housing or are there sections of the city like base housing that have good potential for relocation of Section 8 housing? It's allowed us to now, even though sometimes we're late in asking the question, to your point, I think we're getting smarter about what questions to ask, just like that one. Because there's no way we can control it. And, and even in the most, and even in the, in the, in the deepest and the most thoughtful questions we may ask them, it is difficult. I mean, even just in, in, in the world of hyper-poverty and, and across, across the United States, the transience of students and the transience of, of people that are just trying to stay in front of the, or don't have homes or is a difficult thing to deal with. And so we have to, we have to provide some flexibility out there that doesn't overutilize buildings and allows us some flexibility when that stuff happens. Or be intentional about programming and choice for students who may not, because, again, the idea behind choice shouldn't be those who can. Part of it has to be about, your point, is that there are students that don't necessarily have the opportunity for choice because of the situation they've been dealt. But that shouldn't exclude them from being able to choose a building or program that they want to choose. And so that's why I think the choice balance with the neighborhood is very important here. And I think that the strategic location and can help us in that because we can predict some of these movements with some questions we ask. I, I share your concern tremendously as a planner and as a demographer. That, it makes me nervous every time I do a projection because of that very reason.
And if I may add one additional piece, that's been our challenge as we've talked with the board about potential impact of what will go on in St. Paul's. And it's not that we're waiting for the city to tell us how, what we need to do, but there's an uncertainty, and we know, research is very clear, the kids who change schools in successive years tend to lag behind in achievement, you, you know? And so we don't want to make decisions or make recommendations to the board that would have kids moving in successive years because we didn't know what the final master plan is for that area. And so that's why that remains for us, one of those big question marks. It's not that we're ignoring it or trying to avoid it, but if we're going to come with a set of recommendations that we feel in the best interest of the children and their ability to be successful as students, we need some more information to fuel that. And so I, I, I guess the, the other point I would make in this is that educational planning is not static. It, it is very dynamic. And so, yeah, what we do today, we've got to have a view toward the future and we have to be ready to make adjustments, but we also need to anticipate the future some so that we aren't making major adjustments on an annual basis.
Yeah, if I could say, I, I think the uncertainty cannot allow us to be paralyzed.
That's right.
We have to continue to move and act, and we have to move, I would say, in certainly more swift way than we have in the past. We knew we were going into the educational planning by looking at enrollment figures, capacity, facility index, and programming. Bottom line. That's what we knew we were doing, that's why we're here today, and we don't want to take our gas, our foot off the gas pedal. We need to continue to move forward. Now, there's still our uncertainties, but as, as, if we plan well with agility, we should be able to be able to modify moving forward. So the other thing we need to consider is budgeting. You know, we have a budget season upon us. And so we want to know what we need to budget for this next year, for the following year's issues or changes, options, whatever they may be, and not miss a whole year because we've missed the budget season.
That's right.
So that's why we have got to keep going and getting this input, knowing that in May, March, April, May, we're going to be putting in a budget that's going to reflect some of these changes. We can't wait another year.
No, no, we can't.
That's not an option.
And that was our early anxiety when we realized the, the challenges around Camp Allen. But recognizing we still had another 18 months on that project gave us some wind because it won't open until the summer of 2020. And so that's one, again, we have a model, we have what we think makes sense, but we can do some more of that future projections as, as Ms. Wagner was mentioning. But you're right, we have made a commitment to launching the comprehensive CTE High School in the fall of 18.
Right.
And on that shared campus model, and so we have to continue marching in that way. And, you know, we have to continue to address 2,500-seat capacity at the middle school level, so.
Exactly, we do.
The St. Helena piece.
You know, the other thing we need to consider on all these scenarios is that there are going to be buildings that we're putting back into the kitty, frankly, that we're not going to be using anymore, that the city could revitalize in other ways. It could turn out to be revenue back towards education potentially. And the sooner we do that, the opportunity is great for us. So I think we need to be very transparent about those four or five buildings that in these multiple scenarios could be becoming available the next two to four years.
Yeah. I don't see putting the brakes on things, but I'm also cautious about moving forward too, too quickly, even in terms of the budgeting piece. You know, how do we budget, you know, in terms of moving forward? Do we pad it because we anticipate this or, and, and that's my thing.
Dr. Robinson?
Two things. One, we can't ignore the condition of the building because.
Exactly.
We don't have enough money to take care of the buildings that we have. Second of all, as much as it'd be nice to give the buildings back to the city so that they could reinvest them, they've been sitting on buildings for over a decade throughout the city.
Yeah, but there are some today that I would argue are likely to be revitalized sooner than later, I think, based on their location.
So, I'd like to join in. Um, so just to kind of go back, you know, Tracy, you've mentioned, uh, you know, the five to six years in, and, and I'm somewhat piggybacking on Mrs. Doyle in terms of, uh, the work that we've done and, uh, trying to advance the ball down the field, even if it's just the next 10 yards towards eventually getting to the end zone. Um, you know, when we look at, it's, these are hard conversations to have, uh, because there's, uh, data that can be ruthless, uh, there's various interpretations of it, people have different experiences and feelings, and all these things come into play, um, you know, with, with this work. One of the things that, that you mentioned starting out was, um, you're looking at the, uh, socioeconomic diversity, the free and reduce lunch number, and you put out at the high school level, I think it was 63 or 64%. And I just recall, uh, when we had some conversations around master milestones and we just looked at 70, uh, because part of what we acknowledged was, you know, at the high school level, you never know if the numbers are correct.
Correct.
Uh, even at the elementary school level, just like with census data, there's always undercounts.
Yep.
So we, we know that there's some wiggle room, uh, you know, in those numbers. But when we've worked on our accountability plan, when we have conversations around, um, looking at, uh, how do we advance opportunities and build upon strengths as well as address some gaps that we may have, you know, we always and often have conversations around, um, we're the most experienced teachers, or what do we do to support, uh, the classroom environment? And how do we make sure that students have access to rigorous coursework? And what we find, at least I think we find in Norfolk, uh, you know, we're a microcosm of what we see across the Commonwealth and what we see across the country. That, um, divisions with urban cores like we have, or that have, uh, large numbers of, uh, hyper-poverty schools, just using the definition of 75% free and reduced lunch or higher, uh, we know that right now in the Commonwealth, based upon, uh, 2013, 2014 data that the Commonwealth Institute, uh, put out recently, uh, Norfolk is the, has the second largest of those hyper-poverty schools in comparison to, uh, other divisions in the Commonwealth. Our conversations have been around, what do we do to provide all students access to grow and succeed? You know, I acknowledge, and whether I choose to wear it or whether it gets, uh, thrown at me, this whole conversation around diversity and busing and zoning and housing, you know, I, sometimes I get kudos and sometimes I get cussed out, okay? But it, it's, but when you look at the overwhelming data, uh, I think one thing, uh, tends to be clear is in Norfolk and in across the Commonwealth and across the vision, uh, where we see more balanced diversity, we see more access to rigorous coursework, uh, we see, uh, teacher tenures tend to be longer, principal stays tend to be longer. We see a lot of positive data that occurs as a result of that. Also, uh, you know, yesterday I was in Richmond and Governor McAuliffe was speaking, and, uh, one of the things that we know is talked about a lot in the Commonwealth and we talk about in the context of our career in technical education is, uh, employers are demanding more and more, uh, employees or individuals who know how to function in diverse environments, know how to collaborate, know how to get along with their peers, so on and so forth. And, um, and so in our effort, in my view, of trying to prepare children for success in the workforce, you know, what we're, the conversations we're having align, align with that. So, uh, it's easy, it's almost like when you were talking about the, um, the theoretical utilization on paper. It's easy to have those conversations on paper, uh, put them in accountability plans, put them in strategic plans. It's hard when, um, uh, when you then have to make a decision that impacts people and impacts children. Even on the conversation around Lafayette Winona, you know, at the time that the decision was made to close Lafayette Winona, uh, Lafayette Winona was actually having positive trends in terms of academic achievement at the school. But we made the decision that we wanted to try to provide additional opportunities for all students. And so there were many who said that by, you know, closing the school and opening up, uh, the Academy for Discovery, that, uh, it would not work, we wouldn't see demand, you know, nobody would want to go there. I mean, and we have found, actually, we have the, the opposite problem, a good problem, I guess, where demand has grown, uh, and we have to figure out even how you get into the school.
Right.
Because there's all these different pathways. So I think when we look at our specialty programs, the ones that are, uh, um, fully and well implemented, uh, when we look at our, uh, choice programs, there seems to be growing demand, um, at least wait lists tend to indicate that. And part of our conversation has been, is there ways for us to grow that capacity? You know, it's, um, I would love to be able to take the elephant out with one bite, uh, because that's just my nature. But I also recognize that we can still do it in smaller bites and sometimes in, in chunks. So the, um, you know, I think the move around St. Helena, I think, is a positive step. Uh, I think we have to simultaneously figure out, um, we've had a task force that's been looking at lottery and choice and how all that works, specialty programs, we've got to align that. And then, um, and then we know we have gaps as we've talked about, uh, the difference at the, in the current environment of the specialty programs as they exist at the high schools, that not all of them are fully functioning. And we even had conversation, do we talk about changing some to align with, with this, with this work? It's going to be tough, um, and it, and it just always is, but oftentimes, when you look back, um, you find that there are a lot of decisions that we do make that work, and hopefully we'll learn from those and build upon them, the decisions that we've made that, um, have not worked, and we have to have the courage to, to talk about that and figure out how we, how we move forward. The other thing I just wanted to mention, um, you know, I served on, the, the police department has a Fair and Impartial Policing Work Group. And in that work group, we talk about implicit and explicit biases that we all carry. So even we have conversations around, uh, housing, you know, this, for example, we talk about the, the vouchers at, uh, the military vouchers. I mean, vouchers allow for fam- I mean, vouchers allow for families up to eighty percent of A and my area meeting income to, to get a voucher. If, if, if families were at eighty percent of area meeting income, they would exceed most of Norfolk. So, you know, we have to, you know, even as we have those conversations and trying to figure out what the city might do, there are certain things that we know that we have right now, we don't know. Hurricane could come, I guess, November. Might still be able to get a hurricane. Hurricane could come and change all kinds of dynamics. But how we plan for the way things are right now, how we make decisions that are going to positively impact learning environments for our children and our staff, and, and make these steps forward is, is really that, that, that challenge. And we're not going to be perfect with it. But I do think the data and the definitions are important. So in ending my soliloquy here, I do have one, one question for you. So you mentioned earlier about some scenario with Booker T. and Maury and elementary school zone, and it would result in busing. So can, can we get a definition of what that means? Give you, give you a reason why I ask. So I remember when we were having conversations around South Side STEM Academy. And we had all these conversations about the bridge, you know, the, how far the bridge was, how long the bridge was. And so I know one day I was driving around, and there's a bridge that goes from, when you're at Norfolk State, and you cross over the bridge and you go to the campus, though, it's of some length. There's a bridge on Hampton Boulevard, when you're at Larchmont, and you, and you go across. For what I can tell, the bridges are about the same. Now psychologically, might be some other things that impact that. But when we talk about neighborhoods and busing and transportation, one of the things that, at least we have found, I think, with, with our choice programs, it seems to me when there is something that families feel is what they want on the other end, they don't care. They'll drive, they'll request out-of-district transfers, they'll use fake addresses, they'll do whatever they have to do in order to get to something that they believe is going to serve their, their child. And a part of what we've tried to figure out is, how do we make sure that we have that quality opportunity, you know, everywhere? But can you talk about, when you use the terminology of busing in neighborhoods, what, what, what are you using? Are you using three-quarters of a mile? Are you using some distance? What, what are you using?
It's more on a, when I say it, it's more on a, on a programmatic level, okay? So the idea, and if we go back to some of the origination of choice or magnet schools in this country, it was an opportunity to do a voluntary busing. And that's been a commonly used term around the country, that a voluntary busing method to integrate students across the board, whether that be race, socioeconomic, and very successful in a lot of places. When we, when we choose a geographic area where students don't have a choice, other than to leave their immediate area to go to another place, that's a busing that has a negative connotation around this country. And we've moved a long way from it, we hope we have, in some places, you know, we haven't. So when I use that, I don't want to bus kids out of a neighborhood or a, or a logical geographic feeder that has a, has some proximity. Because, again, the idea of choice, in my opinion, isn't those who can. And when there's not an opportunity in your neighborhood school to succeed, then there's no choice. And so when you're, when you're geographically picking up a group of students, whether it be poor, whether it be race-related or ever, and taking them to a different geographic reason for whether, whatever it is, non-programmatic, that's busing to me. In the historical context, to me, that's what it is. I don't think that should happen to any child. I think the choice, true choice, is being able to truly choose an opportunity for you, whether it's in your backyard or it's across the city. And so I apologize for the miscommunication or the definition, because I agree, that definition has to, when that word is used, I think there has to be definition to it.
I think it's so loaded, and we have so much baggage with it, that's why I just want to get some clarity with it.
I concur, and, and so, and, you know, I, you, we all throw those, some words out that we know are loaded words. And, and not intended to be, but what, what we'd like to see is that the idea is that people do have this proximity to school. I mean, there is, there is certainly some value to what a community, what a school means to a community. You close a building, and you don't do anything to the building, what we just talked about, and boards happen on the building, it hurts the community. Just as much as a thriving elementary, middle, or high school can
Lift up.
lift it right back up. So what becomes difficult, not unachievable, is that when nobody from the community attends that school, they never visit that school. And so this, it's hard to make the outreach back out from the school, even though there might be intention to do that. So we may find that there's neighborhood projects or things that you can do as a choice school. But how much value does it add to the next-door neighbor, who maybe see one coat drive a year? Maybe some, maybe none, I don't know that answer. We actually had a steering committee member ask that question, does it really matter? And my experience, and I think all of our experience is, is exactly that, is that if there is community involvement, when the neighbors can come in and use the gym, or use the cafeteria, use the library, use something, that means something to the community. But when they're going, you know, these kids are coming from everywhere, or is it really our building, there's some confusion over that. And maybe part of it's communication, maybe part of it is part of that. But I think that's part of it. I, I hate using the loaded words, but sometimes we know that they have some impact with them.
Yeah, I just wanted to get, get clarity.
I appreciate that, too. And so, and so I think that there's ways, though, as we explore that area. I mean, we talk about that, that core. What would be great is that we could fix a lot of capacity, condition, and utilization issues with some new construction. I mean, if we had dollars to do it, we could, we could reduce the number of portfolio that you have, which reduces operational costs, which throws those dollars back in. If we had some resources to do that. So I think in the comprehensive planning effort, what we need to do is we need to identify where those buildings will occur, regardless if we have the funding for it yet or not. But this is where it's going to have the most impact. So if we need to, if we need to, if we needed to close Jordan Elementary and Boone Elementary and Haywood Elementary to make one great Norfolk Elementary, because it makes sense demographically, programmatically, condition, that's what we should be doing. And that's the message in the ask that we need to be saying. And now that we have every piece of data, the argument's stronger for us in that.
Ms. Wagner, Dr. Gabriel.
Okay, which brings you back to my comment, I guess, at the last session, in terms of choice. And I, choice is good. But when we talked about choice in terms of CTE and Booker T. and doing the changes simultaneously, when you look at that in terms of choice, why would I want to send my child to a program that has not been fully developed as opposed to going to a CTE or someplace like that? So my, and you're right, in terms of money and budget, you know, if we're going to do it, let's make sure we do it so that every, you know, that the grounds are fair with each of the schools. And I have to beg to differ in terms of tra- transportation. Affluent parents can certainly, if they want something for their children, they can certainly make a way. But we are living in an urban community, but many of the parents who would love to be able to make those kind of choices and do it themselves will not be able to. So we have to look at, look at, again, the big picture.
Right, and just to be clear, I was just referencing the out-of-district. But on the, for our, for our choice programs, with the exception of one, that did not evolve that way, we provide transportation. So that was, that was the point that I was trying to make, that the, oftentimes, what I would hear people say is, somebody won't choose something because it is, you know, so, so many miles away or so many minutes away. But we have, you know, if we talk about private schools, you know, oftentimes, people may drive from one city to another. So I was talking about the distance, I wasn't necessarily talking about the, the access. I agree with you on the access piece.
So the last, on, on that point, I think, there's, every, every district and division has a sweet spot for, for tolerance of how much choice. Look, Boston, Louisville are great examples of going way too far. And they're great school districts that have great leadership, it's not, and have great boards. But look back, I don't know, seven years ago to Louisville, they went complete choice, nightmare, almost bankrupted them. Because of that. Because, I mean, because the idea is that
That's interesting. I thought Louisville had some great academic achievement.
They do.
Oh, okay.
And it started detriment when parents were, I mean, they were, they were almost bankrupt. It wasn't an achievement issue, they almost went bankrupt. They couldn't, they couldn't afford it. And so, and again, that's, that's a difficult thing, is that you've got a budget to worry about on top of achievement. So you've got both that, unfortunately, you've been tasked with, or fortunately, you guys have been tasked with. But I think that's part of it. I think, like I said, there's a sweet spot. Louisville achieves because of their choice program. But they also achieve because they, they knew what they did was a budget nightmare for them. And so they had to kind of reel back because of it. And so, you know, those are, those are real examples that we can use to make sure. And, look, we're moving more towards that sweet spot as we get better information in this division about what is, what is true. I mean, two years ago, I presented you a neighborhood and choice concept that still has viability to it across the division, that allows this opportunity that you've, that you've explored, that what happens to those kids who have that transit? We have local buildings that we could utilize stuff like that. But there's probably four dominos that we haven't uncovered yet by doing that. Because we kind of made it, and then we kind of rested on it for a while. But I still think there's some validity to it in, in achieving the goals that we want to achieve. Dr. Gabriel, you got a question on that?
One question that I have for the, the task force when they get together is of the schools that are going to be impacted and the decisions that are made, those that rest with, well, they all rest within a community, but how involved is that school with the community? How involved is the community involved with that school? And I'll just say, just in the, just recently, a lot of schools had their fall carnivals. And they invited folks from the community to come in, like the neighbors, churches, civic leagues. And in one school that I can think of, once the civic league came in and saw the school, and they saw some benches and some picnic tables that needed some assistance, they volunteered to assist with that. And a relationship began. And so, so for example, with Fair Lawn and Poplar Halls and, and all those, I, I know there's relationships that exist. But I, I would like for the committee to look at that and to see if there's going to be, if we can either bring them along when, when, when and if a transition is done, or if for that community, it would, it would not be best for that community.
Okay, that makes sense. That makes a lot of sense to me, okay.
Well, can, can you elaborate just because I'm, I don't quite follow it?
No, I was going to say, when we say if it's not good for the community, I think I shared with the board one time, there was a headline, the Melinda Boone Plan, is how parents described when I was doing some rezoning, boundary changes when I was in suffolkian pupil personnel. People will define the community differently sometimes when they don't want change. So be cautious of what we're seeing, the, what will be the drivers for change occurring or not occurring. That's, that, that's, that's all I'm saying. Because we can always find a groundswell of people who don't want to change, and then we're stuck in a place, even though it's not the place we desire to be. I certainly value, and I think, having public comment sessions, having community forums and those types of things, give the community an opportunity to hear, to give voice, to allow us to tweak. But I do caution us, if we go to an approach, that if a community says it's not good for their community, and we are dealing with a, a bigger picture, we could be stymied in any effort of ever making adjustments to deal with under, in, under utilized schools or program shifts. So just that caution to all of us.
I don't want any adult interest to supersede what the students need.
However, I'm hearing also, though, is that if existing partnerships are occurring, let's not jeopardize those relationships.
Exactly.
And if there's resistance, bring them into the conversation to foster a greater relationship in the move.
That's right.
That's what I'm hearing.
That's right, because those, those neighboring communities might be providing tutors, they might be building gardens, they might be doing all sorts of different things to create relationships. And, and that, that's, that's, but I don't, I do not, Dr. Boone, I do not want us to have adult interest of, or what a community might feel. I understand what you're saying, and that's not what I intend. But by my question for the task force to consider.
I think Dr. Robinson, you're up, and then we're going to try to
I'm going to pass. I'm going to withdraw. My question's been answered.
All right, Ms. Doyle, did you have something?
I have another, can I respond one more to Ms. Wagner's point
Sorry.
on programs? Because I think this is important. Implementation, as you said, like the CTE. I think that, I think this is critical. I think that just saying you have a program doesn't make it successful. And I think that building a program from the grassroots and really giving it the time to grow and, and really nurturing the program is important. I go back, and, and I always make this reference because I've worked there so long now. I've been a seventeen-year relationship with Duvala County, Florida, who has a sixty-five school magnet and choice program in their hundred-and-sixty-seven buildings. It's a pretty robust program. There are two buildings, or Stanton and Paxton, that serve as a beacon of educational achievement in their district. They, if you look at World News Report, they always make the top ten public schools in the country. These are in urban core parts of the city that at one time were so depleted and dilapidated that nobody would go there. And when those schools first made the conversion over to be those programs, to be magnet programs at high school level, they struggled. They stumbled, they tripped, they, they fought the community, they fought the, they fought that the kids couldn't meet rigor that live in the community, they, they went through those growing pains. But because they continued to nurture and they, they continued to really build on the program opportunities, now they become these buildings that, your goal, what you're saying, is that because they've put some thought into the enrichment of the programs, is that, that, but what Stanton and Paxton didn't do was they never, they never stepped on the toe of the existing successful programs of the other high schools out there. What they wanted to do was support those high schools. And if the students wanted a different opportunity, come here, is what was, that was kind of their mantra and has they built. I think the same thing occurs in a CTE, or whether it's an arts program, a Booker T., or whatever program we could put there. I think they have to work in, in harmony together to make sure they all succeed. We don't want to create a CTE to pull kids out of Booker T. or Maury or Granby. We want it because kids want an opportunity at a comprehensive career and technical education that offers pathway to college and career. That should be the message, and as we do that. So I think one of the goals in, and as we talked about the boundary scenarios at the CTE program, was that the, the entry point of just ninth graders to start allowed us some transition time out of Lake Taylor High School for the existing students to not jeopardize or to disrupt their educational, their educational career. But by starting at ninth grade and working in collaboration with the existing CTE campus, we can allow some growth to happen there. And maybe make a mistake or two, because that happens in all of these. I mean, if you ask Stanton and Paxton, they tripped some, and, but they were able to pick themselves back up because they had another supportive other schools to help them. So I think, I, I, when you say it, it really resonates with me, to build on the success of all programs. Don't jeopardize other programs just because you want to build one. And so, and it was in light of our boundary conversation, one of the, some of the drivers of the programmatic discussion of feeder that, I mean, where's a nine-twelve STEM program going? I don't know that answer right now. But it certainly seems like a great opportunity, a comprehensive career tech school that's going to have engineering and medical sciences and these kind of things. That, to me, it seemed like a natural feeder, that's why I introduced that. But it may not be. There may be something at Booker T. that does that, I don't know. But, but so that's why I'm, as the planning goes, and when we offered those different planning scenarios and boundaries for the high school and the CT in particular, the idea of the programmatic feeder, a K-twelve system that works together from K to twelve, that you've got this real goal of a STEM or whatever it leads you to, because I think that's, that's pretty awesome stuff. And we don't start from scratch then, because we start at kindergarten, and we have time to build. So I think that going back to some of our reasoning, and not to add confusion to the high school boundary conversation, was one of the reasons we thought about that programmatic pathway, is because of that, is to help support that.
So can we come back to that just for, for a moment? So St. Helena, consideration of the St. Helena change, is there any strong objection to the board moving forward with having a public hearing? Of course, maybe more than one public hearing, but at least an initial public hearing next or maybe more than one public hearing, but at least an initial public hearing next week at St. Helena to talk about that modification?
I think we should proceed.
I think we should proceed as well.
So we will, our plan then will be to proceed with that public hearing. Now, coming back to the whole conversation around the high schools, the CTE, the balancing and the zones. So what I hear Ms. Wagner saying, which I agree with, is right now, in the current environment, we have specialty programs at all of our high schools. When we looked at the specialty program last January, we found that at Booker T. and at Lake Taylor, there were differences than we had at the others. As we are making this transition of Lake Taylor High being the focus of the CTE school, then that kind, it takes care of, or at least is planned to take care of, the fidelity of the specialty program at Lake Taylor. We have not talked about what we're going to do at Booker T. So that as part of this high school realignment, if you will, that there's something that we are doing there. So can we talk about or get some thoughts and feedback on what does it mean in terms of the next phase of the CTE program as currently envisioned at Lake Taylor? And how do we consider tying it, coupling it with the conversation that we have around what we may grow or stand up or redo for the specialty program at Booker T.?
John Coleman presented to the board, and we presented information during the summer, early fall, of the work that the task force, this ad hoc group, that has been pulled together since the meeting, the mini-retreat with the board where we address specialty programs. It's a district-wide opportunity and the idea is that how do we, one, assess and strengthen what we have? And we know that Booker T. has a separate niche issue and that deals with what will its true specialty program be, since the arts never fully matured to where we had all hoped it would be. They've attended conferences, they've collected information, they are doing that work. We are also going to give, giving Booker T. an opportunity because what has made, let me step back. What has made the specialty program successful in four of the high schools has really been the school's grassroots attempt to bring forward a specialty program that meets their student needs and the school's interests in a way that they have their buy-in, not something that's done to them. And so part of the work that's ongoing, both with Booker T. and with this task force that's looking at this, is evaluating what would we like, what would Booker T. like to have its specialty program be? We're not saying it should abandon the arts, if that's what they want to be, then how will we develop it to fruition? You know, there are other comments that, other thoughts that have been out there, such as international baccalaureate program. Again, not to repeat the problems that we had with replicating young scholars. And we replicated young scholars without a pathway for increasing enrollment in the program at the same time that we stood up another program, the Academy of Discovery at Lakewood. So parents then began looking at a lot of options and we know young scholars is a program for students who have been identified as gifted. That was the program that had a very specific criteria for enrollment. And as we, again, thinking forward in terms of what we have in place, sustainability, success, and what will we need to be able to meet some goals, we continue to look at the impact of the Academy of Discovery at Lakewood and its authorization to move into the middle years program that started this year, middle year IB program. What will the future look like for international baccalaureate at a single site at Granby? Because, and I've stated this previously, Granby has been successful with students who have matriculated through that program without a middle years program. So we don't want to close the door to students who don't matriculate through a middle years IB program. We want to be able to keep those students involved and interested and active. But when we have a group of students who also complete a middle years program and want to access the high school IB program, how do we ensure that we have seats available for the interests and those students who can be successful? And not just simply grow a waiting list. We know facility-wise, capacity-wise, Granby is accommodating all it can. And so, I think unlike what was done with young scholars, we're able to demonstrate a potential need in the coming years of a second high school IB program based on feeder patterns. We have maintained a waiting list for IB without a middle school feeder program. That waiting list is only going to grow when you have competition from students who are, who complete the middle years program and have a desire to go on, not all of them will. And those students who haven't competed, completed a middle years program and who want to move into IB and be successful. And so that's a data point that we're also looking at and having some early conversations with as it relates to Booker T. But again, paying attention to what was the historical context with young scholars and why that wasn't successful. We can clearly document that there was not a pathway for growing that program. And at the same time, we stood up a program that was as interesting to parents who normally would have chosen young scholars. So we actually created competing interests by expanding, by the second site of young scholars and then opening ADL. So we had that competition piece. And in the end, the reason we made the recommendation board to return young scholars to a single site was so that the cohorts that go through that would be strong enough and would continue to thrive in a way that we had seen early on with young scholars and had been as very strong history, so.
Dr. Robinson?
I have a question about that. I agree that it was not in our best interest to have two sites of young scholars. My question is, do we have a waiting list for students or get more applications than we have room for for students for the young scholars program?
For the young scholars?
Yes, ma'am.
Last couple of years, that had not been the case.
Had not been the case.
That's correct. And so that was part of the genesis for the recommendation to the board to return to a single site, plus the fact we were looking at the impact of competition with the program.
The follow-up question, is that because we had the two sites for young scholars, so we had so much capacity that we couldn't fill it? Because going back historically, the reason for wanting to expand the young scholars program at the time when it was a single site is that there was a lot of kids that wanted to get into the program, we didn't have space for them. So my, the next question would be, would it be wiser just to build incrementally rather than having a second site? Even for something like IB program?
So to your first question, I think what impacted that belief system, that philosophy of what could have happened with young scholars, was the fact you opened a secondary three-eight program with a specialty learning focus. And therefore, it didn't drive increased enrollment into young scholars because they also had another opportunity. I think young scholars would have seen, we would have seen some greater potential had we not had ADL come on. But when parents of gifted students, which young scholars is a program serving gifted students, also recognized other choices, then they applied for the various opportunities and not all of them went to young scholars. In terms of growing into the second program of, that's why, again, with my intent to float this publicly today, but to let you know the depth of which we are considering this work and to be serious about what happens with Booker T. in a specialty program and looking, a data-driven piece on this, not just about waiting lists, but the fact that we now have something we haven't had before, which is the middle year feeder program, that, you know, what's the difference between a child's readiness who comes through the middle years program versus all of those who never had a middle years program? And when they compete for the seats that we have, who's going to be left out? Because we will, I will not ignore the fact that we never had a middle years program. And all of these years, we've had an extremely successful IB program. So we don't want to shut the doors and say that there's only one pathway into IB and that's through the middle years program.
Ms. Wagner, Ms. Bessine, Dr. Gabriel.
And yours, because I'm going to shift gears a little bit, because I just have a question and I guess clarification. CTE and VOTEC, vocational program, how is that, is, CTE is more advanced or, and how have we?
Yeah, so you'll recall the presentation that we made to the board and we've actually in agenda planning started mapping out when we will come to the board with another update on where we are. The model that Norfolk was moving toward with a comprehensive CTE high school was the idea that the academics, let me step back. What we currently have is students attend their home high school and then every other day, they are between their home high school and CTE. So there's no definitive connection between the academics and the career work other than what happens at Norfolk Technical Center. The idea with a comprehensive CTE school is that we actually begin to blend and mail the academics with the career focus that allows students to then be more job-ready and/or college-ready if they choose, or post-secondary ready to move into the various technical fields that the current and future job market is requiring. And so in the comprehensive CTE schools, the faculty is not the CTE faculty and the academic faculty. It's one faculty. And they drive the language, for example, in writing. Yes, we have a focus on writing and we should, all students need to be able to write well and that's what we hear from employers. But where do we bring in that aspect of technical writing? That's a nuance on what's needed for the field that the students are pursuing.
Okay, that takes me to my next question in terms of the VOTEC building. And I get CTE and I think it's a great program. But I'm taking it down a notch in terms of students that may not be CTE-ready or want that path, but really want just vocational. And I ask this question because getting to special ed, there were students that I dealt with that wanted the vocational track, for lack of a better word. But, unless they culinary arts. But what they did was they set the standards higher, so high that the students who really wanted to and probably would have done very well in those programs, and they could not get into the programs. So I guess what my question is, how do we address those students who may not be on that level of CTE but would be great, blue collar, you know, and just want just standard vocational? Is that what we're going to do with the VOTEC that we already have? Or will we make something available for those students who are maybe just good C students and that's the track that they want?
Well, first, let me dispel the myth that any student who would have to enroll in the CTE high school has to be an A or B student. Let me dispel the myth, right off the bat, because you said C student and that was the truth.
And that was probably lack of, and I take that off the record.
Because it is going to be open to all students who demonstrate an interest and an ability. Yes, students with disabilities who may not be on the more severe in the spectrum, but it will serve students with disabilities also. You will recall in the presentation that we've done about the comprehensive school that until we have a facility that would replicate the heavy manufacturing labs that we have at NTC, the comprehensive school as currently programmed would be Lake Taylor High School for academics and a lot of the IT and some of the CTE programs that don't require the heavy manufacturing labs, such as welding and all of that, and the other campus would be NTC. We will allow all students who are currently enrolled in NTC to continue to matriculate. So we run a parallel system for a while. But the idea is that would be the pathway into CTE. But also, we are not stepping away from any of the CTE programs that currently exist in high schools and where appropriate, we will continue to expand them. In some of the early work that we've been doing with the Maury Ed specs, we talk about how do we build around that core being the medical specialty area, that being their specialty area, and all of the career fields that come from that, not just the fact of being a physician or a nurse, but also what are the business entities that go on within healthcare? The sports medicine piece where we already have a smaller program connected to that. So we're using that as the center and then the spokes coming from it. As far as students and the blue collar workers, that gets into also additional programming and why this work that we do with the shared revenue funding formula is so important. Because unless we get the base of that moving significantly, we're going to be in a no-growth position for this district to do what we're talking about and some other things. But this is where we strengthen the relationships with the hospitality industry and others who are sitting at the table on our CTE advisory groups and they're helping us think. So how do we strengthen the internships and the externship opportunities where students can do some on-the-job training that would allow them to go into that, but never closing the door on the various careers? See, we are putting a cap on who can't go and we aren't saying only certain people can go.
Okay, and I guess, and just taking it to the next level, there was, I guess, even dealing with the ID students who were really looking, seeking, who had the capacity to be, to be able to do things like that, the heavy manufacturing or whatever. Would that facility be a place where they would be able to move forward in terms of the workforce? And I know we have the post-secondary program that we do with, in terms of employment, but it would just be good, and I'm just tossing out, for them to have a, you know, another post-secondary area, building, a facility where they could actually thrive.
Right, well, that's certainly something we will put on our planning board. We are planning about how we integrate those students into programs to be successful rather than always creating a separate program, which keeps them not in what would be more of a natural workforce. The other comment as it relates to the standards that were set need to be very clear. Career tech ed vocational standards are not set locally. Those are the expectations for the career fields and so we, those are non-negotiables for us when we say these are certain minimal standards or minimal qualifications that a student must bring in order to enroll. So that's tied to some of the funding that we get as well as the program expectations.
Okay, and is there anything that we can do to merge those or mesh it together so that?
Well, that's part of our longer-term planning, absolutely. Every student needs to be college and career-ready and/or career-ready. And so, what I received when I came here in December of fifteen was how do we advance the CTE to get that open? We haven't ignored or abandoned any of the other work and that's why we talk about, as we saw this year, expansion of CTE programs in the existing high schools and how we will also leverage those for students who have the variety of interests.
Bessine, are you in the queue? I know Dr. Gabriel will pass.
I pass.
Okay, well, then I just, so just for, so we've talked about having the public hearing for St. Helena. We were just on this conversation around the current plans that we have as relates to Lake Taylor High School and the CTE, at least as of right now, seems to be resting on a current Lake Taylor attendance zone model. Seems to be just where it is right now.
Correct.
You know, pending any action that we take. So, but we were looking at, or at least some of the options we were considering, was, does the CTE school become district-wide? Does it have different feeder patterns, geographic patterns, programmatic patterns? I'm still just coming back to the Booker T. piece and maybe there's something that... and maybe this is something that, I don't know if the, I know you have Mr. Coleman, his committee's looking. I don't know if that's something that the steering committee is going to look towards. But it would just seem to me that if we're going to take some steps that's going to change high school attendance boundaries with each high school having some specialty within it, in addition to whatever happens at the CTE school, we're still at the point where the, the Booker T. one seems not fully fleshed out.
That's, that's correct, and that's the work that's going on. And we intend to, before this school year is over, you know, in terms of budget and everything else, let the board know where Booker T. wants to go in that area.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. So timeline-wise, then, uh, we would make, are those coupled in terms of the pathway for what the Booker T. specialty may be? And the zoning process, programmatic process that we choose for, are those two connected or not connected?
At this point, they are not connected. We're dealing with boundaries with the, um, again, around excess capacity at the secondary level, most of that being at the middle school. We also know, because of the specialty nature and taking direction from the board from the January retreat, the investment that we wanted to continue to make into the specialty programs, and to be able to address what's going on with Booker T. So whether we change boundaries or not, Booker T.'s specialty program will, will need to be defined and supported so that it can thrive. Now, as Tracy said, we, we've looked at a number of ways of thinking about this. You, one of the reasons we haven't definitely said something about STEM per state, because every school has a STEM. Okay, let me say that right off the bat. Every school has science, technology, edu, uh, engineering and math in some form or fashion. With Southside STEM Academy being a STEM school, the idea is how do we create a pathway from a program that currently exists? Not that we're trying to drive anybody away from anything else, but avoiding the idea of not fully developing and not having a clear pathway before we stand up something else. So Booker T. hasn't been mentioned for STEM. Not that it would lose anything, but the idea is what will be its niche? You know, we can define it for four of the five high schools. The arts is on paper at Booker T., but it hasn't developed to that level. It could be the arts. If their faculty decides, you know, and their fact, school community decide, hey, we really want to try this IB piece, then what it takes to get ready, because it takes several years to move into that, is not something we can just declare next year and move off the shelf. And so we wanted them to have that same level of voice that the other four high schools had in developing this specialty programs, because that's the reason those have thrived.
So that start, I guess, I'm just, I'm just struggling with. What do we do? When does that start?
This is on, on our side, on the facility planning side. I mean, I think program could impact that. But the idea of planning to create boundaries that create kind of these theoretical utilizations may have an impact on, because this is where I think the correlation is. And I'm sorry I'm stumbling through this, but I'm thinking as I'm, as I'm doing this too. That if we draw the boundaries, and let's say that, because obviously that the school that has the most room is Booker T. But we would draw an equal kind of balance in the boundaries. But if there's a negative impact on, because Booker T. doesn't have a program identified or established, then are most of our draw for the next class into Lake, Lake Taylor going to be those students from Booker T., which negates our purpose? Because the idea is to get a balance of draw from Grand B, Maury, Norview, and Booker T. But if, this is, this is where I see the relationship, is, is exactly that. And I think that's where you're trying to get to, and I, and I agree with that. So the idea isn't to create this for an escape from Booker T.
Yeah.
And that's what we don't want to do.
Yeah.
And so, but, right now, if the program's not desirable, and we get that building to capacity, which the boundary change would do, the idea isn't that, I mean, it should see as, well, you're going to have this great opportunity at Booker T. Again, it goes back to my idea is that your neighborhood high school should be a choice too. Regardless if it's a comprehensive part of the school or the choice program in the school, that should be a desire to be there. And so, um, and again, this is why, when we look at the different opportunities of, of boundary options that we have, do we enter an approach that is a little more cautious, that we don't have to, so if our target number for next year for ninth grade is, let's say, 300, and it could be 325, it could be, it's probably somewhere in that 3 to 350 range, because the capacity of the school's 1,500 at, at Lake Taylor. Okay, so our target should be somewhere in that 1,200 to 1,400 range as an entire school building, which means a 300-student freshman class next year. Okay, so 300, if I'm going to make it all choice, we have about three seconds to get out marketing to all the parts of the city to tell everybody that this is an opportunity to go to. But if we make it so that we've got a geographic feeder to start, or a program feeder that has a natural growth into it, we may only have to target 150 or 200 kids next year. Does that make sense? And so our opportunity for growth, because here's the thing, if you start with a boundary, you can take the boundary away. If you start with no boundary and try to put a boundary in, it's going to be a lot more difficult to do that. Or a program, or whatever. The, the hope is that, like any program, is that the desirability to go there exceeds that 300 number. You want every program like this to have a waiting list. But to my point of establishing a program, of making sure that, you know, we're getting the groundwork, what will show success? Because if our goal is to get 300 district-wide and we get 200, what perception does that have? But if our goal is to get 150, we can get 150, what perception does that have? That's a marketing, that's a communications thing. My goal is to set a reasonable boundary scenario to provide success in that first class. That's my goal. Now, whether you believe that's through a district-wide choice, or through a geographic choice, or through a programmatic, or a combination of the two, because I think they're all good options. But your strategy changes in your first year of how to attract that ninth-grade class to start. So that's my ask in this one. Dr. Gabriel, you had a question?
No, just a light bulb went off when you had said about the programmatic. Because right now, in our division, and Dr. Bean, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have any programs that guarantee you admission into the next set. So like, for example, if you're in the Blair Medical Sciences Program, you do not get automatic admission to the Maury Medical Program. So right now, we do not have any programs that, any specialty programs that have a programmatic entrance way. This would be something new if it were to be adopted.
Correct.
Right, and still, though, we can't make it a guarantee.
Right.
Because we are space-constrained and, you know, the development. But we certainly begin to, to, uh, open up choice options for parents. Well, okay, I may want engineering. Hmm, I didn't, could do the CTE, but I might want to do Norview's Leadership and Engineering Program. That may be the route that I prefer to go. And so either way, they are ready, they, they can think about pathways, and not just feeder pa, not just where I live and where I go.
Dr. Robinson.
Did you have a hand up?
I did.
Yes.
So the, this conversation came back when, earlier when I had a question. Um, I lost my train of thought, but this discussion is bringing me back. So with the specialty program discussion we had last January, we, it was a preliminary discussion, and we talked about next phase, are we meeting the curricular goals of these programs? And as you talk about IB and it being a suc, a successful program, I come back to, well, how are we defining success? Like, by what measures are we saying that any of our specialty programs are successful? Academically, yes, but per IB requirements measures? And then how does that play into our NYPD program? Because there are divisions that you do get automatic based on, as long as you're in good standing, academic standing, you can move on to, you have a spot for. And what would it look like if we considered that? Especially, you know, is that something that the task force is currently looking at?
It's something that we've been talking about, you, you know, at the district leadership team, and as we think about this work of boundaries. And this is that internal struggle that I have. Because if we guaranteed middle-year completers, the spaces in the IB program, we then potentially eliminate all the students who didn't have the middle-year program, and yet have demonstrated personal and program success without a middle-years program.
Right.
And so we'd be closing the door on a group of folks who've been students of ours, who have chosen to come into our schools for a specific interest. And that's why we look at, you, you know, to the point earlier, is there, is there a real demand?
Right.
For a second program?
Right, but depending on how you look at it, and from my own personal perspective, I almost feel like we currently do close the door on some of our own students, because for the IB program in particular, you know, it really struck me that 20% were private school students. So what if we were to, I mean, I really, I would like us to look at that. Like, what would it look like if we prioritized our students, especially those who went through the NYPD program? What would that look like? I, I do think, and, and if we were to do that, and in Grand B's that capacity, like going back to the full discussion, then where, where can we house that group of students?
Well, and.
Where everybody, where everybody has the opportunity.
And certainly, those are the data points that we're looking at. And it gets to one of my core concerns of how we treat K8s and 38s. Gant was a school that if you started in kindergarten, the space was available that you could matriculate through eighth grade. Boom, you were there. What we've done with Crossroads and the design for Southside STEM Academy is to have a much larger fifth-grade footprint, the K5 footprint, than what we have available for 68. And because we allow enrollment at sixth grade at both the 38 school and the K8 schools, there's always that potential to bump our own children. And, you know, I shared that last year with the board when we were talking about how do we grow into the eighth grade at, at Southside STEM? And so that is something we, we have to pay attention to. And yet, one of the pressures on urban schools all the time is, how do we bring people back to the schools who have chosen to leave? And so you close one door to open another, but then do you have another backlash? And that's why we're looking at what's the district's capacity to be able to support a second site? One of those pieces that we've started discussing is what would it look like if we guaranteed? But I, like I said, I, my internal struggle on this is because, and, and I would challenge anybody who says that our IB program has not been successful. We, the majority, I don't have the numbers before me, but the percentage of students who actually receive the IB diploma is smaller nationally, internationally. The number of students who are completers, and if you've ever had a chance to come back to the January IB ceremony, where the students talk about their readiness for college and high-end colleges and difficult courses as a result of, yes, receiving the IB certificate versus diploma, but their readiness, that's also a piece of how, how we determine success. And I, I will not bring to this board a recommendation. The board, of course, I work for the board. But I will not bring forward to the board a recommendation that will close out students who have been in that path without having the middle-year program. But I think we need to make space now for those who are enrolled in a middle-years program and will be there without shutting the others out.
So from a time perspective, we're kind of winding down this session. But, uh, Dr. Robinson, you had a question, and then just want to talk about where we're going to go next. So I think you had a comment.
I was listening so intently to. Probably laying in bed tonight and say, oh, that's right.
Well, you could, you could bring it back in the business meeting if you need to. So, um, I think we have some clear direction on, uh, you know, St. Helena, where we're going with that. I'm still not sure we're clear on all the rest of it. And we didn't even get into, uh, you know, there were some, uh, recommendations that we look at, Lindenwood, and then some other boundary things. So I think we still need to get that information to the board, because the board said they wanted to be able to, uh, uh, see what that, what that may look like. I think when we had the, when you had the steering committee before, and they had the time, and we, we kind of set that up with the idea that some recommendations would come forward to the board for the board to act upon. As we talk about where we are right now with the rest of the puzzle, are we looking at, um, recommendations that would, additional recommendations for us to drill down on and act upon, you know, at the December business meeting? Or where, where are we in terms of actions that we can move forward to keep moving down the line, to, uh, continue to progress, while at the same time knowing all these other things that we've talked about we need to address?
Let me define and pick up on where, where we closed on November 1st on this. Tracy indicated that this was a first phase of the work, and that, that we would jumpstart the other work into development, and we heard him talk earlier about the full district master plan. Okay, master facilities. So that's the ongoing work. The ones that we see that are critical for the fall of '18, the St. Helena piece, and what will happen with CTE. So we have to go back and revisit, because we have made a public commitment to launch that program in, in its full strength in the fall of '18. So that's the other one that has, um, a, a turnaround timeline on it that will impact. You know that there will be, um, items in the budget as it relates to the operation of the CTE program. There was a big advisory committee meeting when we were in Williamsburg for the, uh, VSBA meeting. And so the, the business players are wrapped around this and all of that's going. There's still the work that we have to do around the governance structure for that school. But in terms of that infrastructure, we are continuing to work on that, and that will have a budgetary piece. The boundaries associated with that high school, with the CTE school, is the other piece that we will need board action on for the fall of '18. The remaining work, we aren't, at least I'm, in all the work we've done, and something may emerge. I don't see us coming back with things that would need significant action until maybe this spring, where we decide to do another series of, of community forums and conversations to see what would be some future recommendations. But we think both capacity to, to support the work, because even when St. Helena's approved, we got to talk about what the transportation piece looks like, because there's an impact on that. We will have to have the continued conversation about the K8 for Poplar Halls and Fairlon. That's something too, as we said in the preliminary, because those were preliminary, so we could get this type of feedback. It's something that is at least a year out. It was not for the fall of '18, but rather for the fall of '19. So if that gives a direction.
But in terms of the, the vote, in terms of the boundary work associated with the high schools, we need to take action on that by when?
I would say around, no later than, around February action. Because then we have to market, and, um, and so we can begin that mapping and that planning before we get into student scheduling, so the students would know.
Dr. Robinson.
Do we then hold community forums and public meetings between now and February?
Well, that's where I was.
We, we will be holding those, we're doing the St. Helena ones. And once we, um, vet the information you all have provided us about the CTE and all of that, when, when the task force and the administration are ready to come back sooner than later with what we think, where we, we've processed and, and tweaked based on what we've heard, both from the community meetings that we had, you know, outside of the board as part of the task force, and conversation here, and what the board has submitted, then we will come back sooner than later with a set of recommendations for the board to vet and decide how you move into those public hearings in the January window.
So could I just say something? I think it can't be any later than February.
No, it can't be, because of schedule.
Because if we're going to even get 150, if it's a geo and programmatic combo, we have to start yesterday. And these children need to know what they have the option to apply for, and their parents need to also.
Don't we normally do that in March?
Sorry?
It's not, normally it's done in March, isn't it?
But we also have to factor in our budget issues, you know, transportation costs.
That's why.
Maybe it's, are there any reconfigurations that we have to do, like? Maybe it's there any reconfiguration that we're going to do at Lake Taylor? I mean, there's lots of things that we still need to do. So I say February is at the utmost, and it's at the work session, so it's the first Wednesday in February.
I think the first Wednesday is the discussion for the vote by the second Wednesday, the second meeting in February, because again, we don't want to put it on such a short shrift. You know, we will have for you the budgetary implications, so you'll be able to vet that separate from what the fact, actual, you know, when we bring the public comment around the boundaries and all of that. But we intend to have that so the board can have ample discussion around it. And that's why I would say the first meeting in February, the true discussion of, you know, we're going to bring something to you probably early January so that you can begin to vet and go into public conversation on. You can then have discussions at the first meeting in February about the input on those and vote, take that vote the second meeting in February.
We just can't defer it any longer.
Well, I agree. I just, but I think what's important.
We're not trying to defer. I mean, we came on November 1st with a set of preliminary recommendations so we could get some feedback.
Walk it backwards.
Yeah, and then also, I still think we also need to, I know you said Poplar Hall, Fairlon's not until 1920, but I think if we get people, is that right, 1920?
It's school year for 1920.
School year. That, you know, we need to keep that conversation going loud and clear now and start people thinking about that.
Yeah, we talked about that earlier. I just think right now in terms of the, and I agree with you, I think right now, being clear on what's being asked of the board, and the board is being clear what's being asked of the administration in order for the board to take whatever action the administration would like for the board to take. And so if the goal is that we're going to have some vote and decision around the CTE, the boundaries in the high schools, you've gotten some initial feedback from the board, both from in terms of survey, in terms of what we've talked about, and what we've had today. If there's additional survey now that we've had this conversation, if we need to do something again, you know, give it to us so we can give you the appropriate feedback.
And the task force meets tomorrow.
Right.
So all of this is right in sync, so we'll be able to turn that around.
We just want to make, I just want to make sure from all the things that we have to do that we give it the priority that it needs and we have time to have the community conversations that we need to have. But I'm just going to say, from the conversation, in addition to what Ms. Doyle just said, we've had some things out there, how do we continue to move it down the field, using that analogy? But that other piece, and I saw it in the surveys and I heard it again here today, when we start talking about the high school boundaries, it's almost impossible to separate it from the facilities and the programmatic piece of it. So whatever the leadership team, steering committee, consultants are all looking at, you know, we just need to be able to have those things together. And, you know, so. Anything else from you, Dr. Boone, or?
There's one more thing too. We should have the ed specs back from Maury High School by then, all right, in the spring, so we should be able to couple this all in a bigger conversation as well in terms of budget and timeline.
Well, yeah. I'm looking at Ms. Ingram, Mr. Smith, what's the timeline once?
If we negotiate a process in December, we hope to be by the end of May.
Say it if you want to say it.
I kind of wish it was a little sooner than the end of May. I know we've been talking about this for 10 years, maybe, two since you've been here.
I don't disagree, and we talked earlier, you know, this year with what created the delay in our getting the ed specs piece done, but it's done now, so.
Will we be able to do anything in this planning for the budget year, short of getting the output in May?
Well, again, we certainly know what a comprehensive high school.
Ballpark figure is.
Ballpark figure. We already know what those are going for currently, and so that's it.
What drives that timeline is the obvious demand of the Maury community's engagement. And that's the driver. It's not a matter of the work. It is truly a matter of, as at every community, but that community has, you know, pretty high demands on meeting and transparency, so.
We want to do that across the board.
It does, but the amount, I think that's what's driving it more than anything. We could turn around a POR and program requirements in a day, I mean, to that point. But I think it's a matter of trying to go through a process of, you know, like EVMS. I mean, is the future of that program all at the high school, or is it some of the kids going over to EVMS? Or is it both? Or is it, those are drivers of this that are hard to determine before we get a good programmatic vision of everything. So I think my best guess is that if we, you know, if it comes to some sort of negotiation by December, is that the start would be quick, and we drive it through community engagement. That's all. But I think we can come up with some preliminary stuff, and certainly Mr. Smith knows that too, so we're on the same page with that.
All right. So is it urgent for now? Because every time I'm trying, I used to be good at multiple variable equations, but not anymore. It's like you keep adding variables. Go ahead, go ahead, Tanya.
Transparency, like, so can we, anything that, you know, the FCI for Maury, I think we have to have that up front and center so that people can see.
Yes.
What that is, because I know it's assumed and, you know, people don't know what that means here.
Sure.
And I would like to know that too, just so that I can say, look here, this is where it is, and the community knows.
So any of those schools that have FCIs of 70 or better, which means two-thirds of its systems, or three-quarter of their systems have failed, Maury is going to be at least that and more.
Right.
Yeah.
And I understand that verbally, but, you know, I want to see it.
Put it in context.
Right, well, we have a number of studies that already indicate, that's why we chose not to replicate that, because we have many studies that talk about. We actually last, maybe in 16.
But for clarity, people don't always know.
Excuse me, so. Let's just add it.
Adding into the most current.
Whatever the latest.
The most current should always have the most current.
Whatever the latest information is, can we redistribute it to the board?
Right.
And then make sure, and any documents that we have that are public, even if it's not, we can at least refer it, and so people have the facilities index report, and they can have the Maury report and any other reports that we have that weigh into this. Let's just have all that accessible to the extent that we can.
And real quick, public hearing, it should be out, for next week, should be out like tomorrow, because.
Yeah, well, they've already, it's already been out.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, my blackboard, phone call about the budget hearing for tonight came this morning.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Which is, yeah, that's why I'm making sure.
So we, let's, we'll, yeah, I don't know if it's the first, but in any event, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank the board for the questions and concerns. We know we've got a lot more to do, and we're going to have additional work session conversations next week. And moving forward, also just a reminder, we're also going to have our joint meeting with council next week at Southside STEM Academy. So with that, I want to bring the work session to a close and have a motion for us to move into executive session. You have a motion to that effect?
I move that we move into an executive session. I make a motion that we move into executive session.
All right, have a second.
I second that motion.
All right, moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Dr. Robinson, Ms. Banks.
Thank you. It's the move that the members of the school board, superintendent, and council go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for the discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools, including consideration of the personnel docket of the state. The subject of this section of the motion is to consider revisions to the contract of the superintendent and to decide on the hiring, resignation, leaves of absence, retirement, termination, and salary adjustments and promotion of multiple specific individuals pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. For the discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2 of the above cited code section, the subject of this section of the motion refers to the discussion and disposition of several matters involving specific students of Norfolk Public Schools. And finally, for consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel, the substance of this section of the motion refers to the advice of counsel regarding specific legal matters related to a specific student, the legal relationship between the school board and its education foundation, and the personnel actions and the student support actions identified above pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. Ms. Bassin.
Aye.
Ms. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Reverend Haywood.
Aye.
Dr. Robinson.
Aye.
Ms. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Jordan.
Aye. So I have 4:21, can we convene and be ready to go by 4:26?
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.